Business is the council briefings, city hall schematic design. Tom Nichols standing right there.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council, city manager's staff. Thanks for having me here again today to talk about the next iteration of the design of the new city hall. As usual, joining me today from my staff, Mr. Barry Shockley from Facility Management, Mr. Kevin Justin from Facility Design and Construction, and our project manager, Mr. Tim Oliver, and from Mosley Architects, Mr. Tony Bell, Mr. Josh Bennett, and Mr. Michael Gibson. Let me start off the presentation just with a couple of basic fact checks because there were a few things out there in the media over the last couple of days that were a little disturbing. We are designing 134,000 square foot city hall to meet current requirements. As you know, we did the program studies, and the program studies showed a need for 149, but we decided not to do that. There were some media things lately that said the building was twice the size of the existing building, and it is not. As far as cost of the building, you have graciously appropriated $50,250,000 for this project, and we are working and will stay within that budget. There were some media reports that it was a $66,000, $67,000 building. It is not. So I just wanted to make sure that nobody thought there was something going on that isn't. It's the same program, same project. We've been working all along, and we will take your input and continue to work in that direction. So schematic design. We finished conceptual design. That's what we talked about last time we were here. Schematic design, we are finalizing. And when I say finalizing, we are down to very final discussions with one other organization within the building, and this presentation to you about who sits where, what the adjacencies are, how much space does each organization need. And now that we finalize that in schematic design, Mosley moves into design development. And very quickly, the structural engineer, mechanical, electrical, plumbing come to work, and we start to do the interior design, and we get into the things that are a little more fun to look at. But once you finish schematic design is when we stop revisiting who sits where, who sits next to who, and what those spatial relationships are. So we'll start that off with a quick overview of site plan. We did receive comments back from council members, and we appreciate you for that via the city manager, and we have a series of city manager staff comments, and we will review those as we go through these slides and make sure we've captured all your thoughts and concerns appropriately, and go from there. So I'd like to have Tony Bell come up and join me from Mosley.
Thank you, Tom. So we'll start off by looking at the site plan. Really no change from what we've looked at previously. We're still located to the south of Building One and Building Two, located basically center between the two with a parking lot to the west. The city council comments that we received through Mr. Hanson include confirming that there's going to be no parking within 35 feet of the building, confirming that physical barriers do exist, confirming the number of spaces for visiting public, confirming the location of the public parking relative to the building entrance, and confirming accessible ramp configurations. As we move the design forward, we will confirm back to you that all these different characteristics have been incorporated into the new design as we move things forward. Are there any additional questions at this time from council?
For the site.
For the site. Thanks.
Anybody have any question? Apparently not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's move on to the exterior design. So as you can see from your packet, the design is evolving. As we move things forward, we came before you last month with multiple options. We've now narrowed that down to one, and we're moving that one forward, coordinating the exterior design with the interior design and layout, the floor plan of the building as it is needed for different departments. So this is a view from the building from the north, from the entrance drive. There'll be some parking spaces immediately adjacent to this area, but this is what you would see if you looked at the building from Courthouse Drive. This is what the building would look like from the west, okay? This is where the majority of staff and the public would park. There'd be a staff entry there to the north end of the building, excuse me, a public entry to the north end of the building, and a staff entry to the south.
Can you go back to that first?
Yes, sir.
Thing? The windows on this building, and I put those in my comments.
Yes, sir.
Anyone who drives over to Regent and looks at colonial architecture and looks at that, there's no comparison. First, on palladium windows, and I'm sure people are here familiar with palladium windows, when you get to the arch part, the part that's over the transom, you're never going to see a solid bar like that. Those are very thin, so those don't even look like palladium windows. There's nothing colonial about that architecture, how it's designed. That is not a colonial palladium window. This is a contemporary office building with somewhat colonial look, but those windows don't fit. That's a comment I made to him. I don't know why we can't have buildings, the building can't be more traditional colonial in its exterior appearance. I don't understand that.
Mr. Moss, the building will be very contextual in terms of its nature and final design. We're only in schematic design now, so as we've discussed, we're coordinating the exterior features with the interior features. The fine detailing of the project will evolve as we move things forward. It's anticipated at this point that the muttons, that's the dividing pieces of material between the window panes, will grow in nature, and that will make the windows look much more colonial, much more Georgian. In addition, like the building we're in now, the existing building one, what's referred to as the brick mold, that's the trim which surrounds the window, will also grow in size. So these are features which will be incorporated as we move the project forward, and we will be back with you to discuss these features as we move the design forward.
I just want to be assured that this isn't it.
We can assure you, this is not it. We are still a long way from going out to bit. Yes, sir, Mr. Wood.
I just remember liking the one with the white columns out front because I thought it looked so much more like our courthouse and the normal windows on top. So I was really surprised when I saw that that one leaped to the top of the page, and because I know several of us said we preferred the other design.
Well, it was, I think, felt by staff and others that this was more blend in the Georgian architectural style. The Georgian architectural style doesn't have freestanding columns. It doesn't have pilasters, things of this nature. So the feeling right now is that this will blend better with your existing campus as we move things forward. And as we evolve the design, we will be back to discuss with you, as I said to Councilman Ross, with the finer details.
I like the other one.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you going to have, going back to Johnson, are these going to be true divided light windows? Is that the plan?
They're going to be what's called simulated divided light windows. So the pane of glass will go through, but the mutton will be on top of the glass, so it won't be between the two panes.
Right.
And there'll be a mutton on the inside and a mutton on the outside.
So it won't be a true divided light?
It will not be a true divided light. Correct. So, for example, these windows are shown as nine over nines, i.e. nine individual panes over nine individual panes. It will not be nine individual panes of glass.
Correct.
There'll be one pane on the top sash, one pane on the bottom sash.
And will they be operable or not?
They are not anticipated to be operable at this time.
Okay.
Remember what the council people said.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions about the exterior design? Shall we move on to the next image?
Will the bottom glass windows have any overpressure protection that the upper panes do not?
So when you talk about overpressure protection, black resistance.
Correct.
Something we have not discussed as yet, but we will be discussing security features with you in closed session, and that'll be through the course of the design development phase.
Thank you.
So this is that view from the west. As we discussed, we've got a public entry to the north and a staff entry to the south.
Mr. Wood has a question.
So just going back to that, when I looked at the site plan that we got in our package on Friday, excuse me, it looked like the, that the majority of the visitor parking was on the side of the building, but the visitor entrance was all the way around on the front.
Yes. Let's go back to the site plan.
And that was a little concerning to me.
So there'll be two public entries to the building.
Because there's not that many spaces in that.
Currently being discussed. So a public entry here from the north side of the building, and then an additional public entry here on the west side of the building, but to the north end.
Okay.
So the closest distance between parking here and building entry here, and then obviously there's parking in front of the building to the north of the building as well.
Where will the handicap parking be?
Handicap parking will be both here and here.
So with, if I can, Mr. Mayor, with respect to the parking, as you go through and formulate this, I'd suggest that as part of the parking plan, and I don't know if the city manager does this, or if it's going to be part of your design, but we need to have dedicated parking for visitors because, so that there's a place for staff, a place for council, and then a place for visitors, so that visitors can get in and get out, and it's easy for them to find it, because now they're parking all over creation and walking, trying to find a place, and pulling on doors that are now locked because they used to be open and things like that, so.
Right. So we received that as one of the city council comments, Councilman Wood. Not sure if you submitted that or one of the other council members, but we received that comment, and we will take that into consideration as we move things forward to designate, obviously, ADA accessible parking spaces and visitors' parking spaces as well as staff.
I mean, ADA is mandated, but the actual parking layout and everything is something that we need to do beyond the mandate, I think.
Have you gotten to the point where you know how many public parking spaces you're going to have?
Yes, there'll be no change. You know, there'll be a net zero change in parking spaces from your existing campus, and that's something we've talked about from the project from the very infancy. So the additional parking spaces that you see west of Building Two, that's in this area here, okay, are the displaced spaces resulting from the construction of the new city hall. So there's no net delta in terms of parking. Yes, sir, Mr. Wood, Councilman Wood.
Well, then that's a little concerning too, because we're adding an additional building, and in theory, this building's going to be renovated.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And so there'll be more people, so we're going to need more parking.
The thought is that the relocation of the city fleet, which is currently south of Building Two, will be relocated west of Building Eight, and that will be where they would then reside, freeing up a great number of spaces in proximity to Building Ones and Two, and the new city hall.
Yes, John.
I think what will be important is that we apply the same parking standards to our buildings that we would apply to any private building. And if we're short of that, I think we need to know that. And then we have to account that we have public spaces which would be more in the evening when other people have left, so I understand the council's starting at 6:00, 5:30, so that's a shift, but we just need to make sure that we're holding ourselves to the same standard that we would hold to any other developer.
And I can assure you that we are. We did a parking analysis as part of our initial conceptual design study. We surveyed the entire campus, the number of parking spaces that are available, the provisions for this building in terms of its size, and determined that no net change was required in order to meet the current zoning requirements. And then finally, this is a bird's eye view. Obviously, existing Building One is in the foreground to the left, Building Two to the right, and the new city hall there in the center with a stone mortar pond immediately to the left. So some of the comments that we received from city council were to relook at those architectural features, to make sure they are both compatible with what is currently on the campus, as well as historically correct, looking at good Georgian architecture, and we will assure you that it will be done as things move forward, and we'll look at it again with you. So now looking at the layout of the building, we are currently working with all the departments and reviewing them with them, getting approvals as we revise and update the various floor plans. As we've discussed previously, the commissioner and the treasurer will be housed on the first floor of the building. Second floor of the building will be housed by the mayor's office, the city manager, and city council, as well as the city attorney and the city clerk. And then along the north side of the building will be some shared space for meeting rooms and things of that nature. And then on the third floor of the building will be the volunteer office, the city auditor, budget and management, communications, and finance. And then again, some shared office space for different conference rooms and things of that nature. So once again, three floors, there is no basement in the new city hall. Its size and mass would be roughly compatible with the buildings that surround it, Building One and Building Two. Any questions about the floor plan?
Yeah. Can you go back two slides to the first floor? So show me where the public entrances are.
Public entrances are centered on the elevation on the north side here, and then on the west side at the north end. Those are the two public entrances.
So when people come through the public entrances on the side, what is the, how do you anticipate creating security there? Because when they come in through here, they'll come to a desk, but they're coming in through the back hallways.
If they enter here, for example?
Yeah.
Councilman Wood? So if they would enter here, they would walk down this hall into that main public lobby just as if they would if they came in the front doors. There would be no ability to enter into the treasurer's office along this side corridor.
So there's no doors? It looks like there's doors going on.
There are doors, but they would not be open, and...
They're going to be radiating, right? They're going to be the frequency?
Yes. Yes, there'd be some access control at many points. In addition, all of the public meeting rooms that we've discussed, that would be available to all city staff throughout this building, there'll be some on the first floor, there'll be some on the second floor, there'll be some on the third floor. Those will not be open 24/7. Those will be carded just like any other secured office suite. In order to use them, you know, you'll correlate with, coordinate with the different departments that are in the building, sign up to reserve those spaces, and then somebody will let you in those spaces as appropriate. So have I answered your question, Councilman Wood, about how we get in? And obviously, this is here on the south side. That's the staff entry point. Only staff would be in this corridor, okay?
And show where the stairwells and elevators are, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. Great question. So there'd be two stairwells in the front of the building, two primary stairwells for exiting the building, egress stairs, if you will, one here and one here, basically flanking that front lobby. In addition, there is a monumental stair. It's got two runs, one to the left and one to the right, and that would go up to service the second floor, okay? In addition, there is a secured stair, that's a staff stair, on the south side of the building, basically on the center line. The elevator cores, there are four elevators in the building. There are two for the public at the front, immediately adjacent to the east stair tower here, and there are two elevators to the south, one passenger elevator, one freight elevator. They are also adjacent to the stair tower here on the south midpoint of the building. Any questions with regard to vertical circulation? That was a question from the council that we received. Let's move ahead to the other comments we received. Location of the elevators, consider ramps for egress. So as far as ramps are concerned, ramps are typically used for accessibility for wheelchair-bound citizens. They're not required by egress in terms of egress from upper floors, from third floor, second floor, things of that nature, but they would be required for any egress to the first floor. So we've got ramps serving the building from the parking area to that first floor, but no ramps up to upper levels. Yes, sir?
Well, in the Pentagon, which I spent a lot of time in...
Yes, sir.
...24,000 people in that building, and they use ramps because it's only where you can effectively accurately and quickly evacuate people from that building. Stairs are not conducive to doing that. And I always thinking is, since we're talking about the council chambers itself, and you talk about, now you've got, what, 400, whatever the seating was at some time, we talked about...
300, yes, sir.
Trying to move all those people, and then you look at the flow pattern, you've got, those are, later we're going to talk about that later, some narrow points, choke points. You try to move those people downstairs quickly, that's why baseball stadiums generally don't have stairs. They generally have, you know, that's why the Colosseum in Rome had ramps. So I'm, relative to that stairware, they call it monumental, but that same space, great. What if that was ramp space rather than a stair? I'm just looking at, in the end, and I know you're going to talk about it later, but in the event of something, the speed with which you can move people out of that building is going to be important. And I don't know how, when you're going to talk to that piece, but that is a concern to me in today's environment, that we're thinking about the speed with which, when you say, oh, I'm not just leaving like a store, but also you tell people, 450 people leave, that's, that's a lot of people to be pushing down those stairways out of that building. I'm just throwing that, either going to be bigger stairways, you're going to have something about to deal with that.
So the stairs are sized based on the building code, and there will be four stairwells that the public can access from that front council chamber. The seating capacity of the council chamber is 300. So staff obviously can use the rear stairs, the south side stair, but it will be adequate capacity for everyone to exit in a timely manner.
Well, I guess I'd like to tell me what timely is, and timely for a fire alarm going off isn't the same timely as someone who maybe puts, shoots off a gun or does an explosion. That's a whole different evacuation pattern and different times for that. I just want to consciously know what we've accepted when the time comes.
Well, Mr. Moss, we will discuss that with you as the design moves forward.
Okay.
Be happy to. Any other questions? Let's move forward then to the suite, the mayor's suite, the city manager's suite, and the city council's suite, and look at some specific issues. So this is the suite in its entirety. As we've discussed, it resides on the second floor. The city council chambers here are centered on the main axis of the building. We can enter the suite both from the public side on the north end and from the southern side, which would be a staff entry point here. We've talked about Room 234 in great detail as we've developed this design. Obviously, the space would be very similar to the space that we're currently residing in, but with increased capacity, with increased technology, and with increased features in order for you to do the business that you need to do here for the citizens of Virginia Beach. We have mayor and vice mayor offices, we have city manager offices, and a city council office for every individual member. The majority of the city manager's space resides on the south end of the suite. The majority of the mayor and city council space resides on the north end of the suite. Are there any specific questions with regard to layout?
Can you go back to council chambers?
Be happy to.
Or do you want to go back again, or if it's like, there's a lot more spaces and seating at the dais than there is today. Can you explain to me who they are and why that is?
Be happy to. So the 11 in the middle, obviously everyone is familiar with who those are, right?
Right.
Okay. So there's three on the left-hand side, and there's one on the right. It is currently anticipated that the one on the right would be for the city attorney. That's an appointed position, as we understand it, from city council. The one on the left would be one for the city manager. We understand that's a appointed position, one for the city clerk, and one for the city clerk assistant. So that would be those three. In a di...
Yeah, but I want to ask, I want to ask them, why that centerpiece is sitting there?
The centerpiece here.
Yes.
Okay. So Councilman Moss, that is for city staff, like planning department, like utilities, other staff members who are going to make presentations. We understand from a comment we received from council that there's concern of the placement of that location. So what we have proposed to do, and we will consider other design possibilities as we move things forward, of pushing that back to be in alignment with the rest of the spectator seating. How does that sound?
Much better.
Okay.
Why do you, why, what's the opposition to that?
My point is, my point is, you got, we work for the public. That's the public sitting out there. And now in the center between us and the public, who we work for, is now these staff people. It's an optical visual. It's another barrier between us and the people that we serve. And I, if you look at congressional hearing rooms, if you look at other testimony rooms, you look at other government, they don't put staff between the public and the immediate dais where the council is sitting. It's just a bad optic. And I think it's, and it's not practiced. I went back and looked at other places, and it's not common. Usually the staff either is off to the side in a perpendicular, parallel to the wall, or something off to the side like they are today, but they're never out in front. And on either side of where people are speaking on podium, I mean, I've just never seen that architectural layout in any hearing room or any testimony place that I've been, and I went back and looked, and I just think it's, we should be able, the people in that first row center should be able to look directly at us and not have to look over staff to see us. That was my thought process.
But don't the people now have to look over the staff to see us on the left-hand side?
Well, they're over on that far left side, but they're not sitting out as a separate row by themselves in the center of the room. That's my reasoning.
Jessica.
I have a question about in the chambers for, where is the dedicated media space?
We are still working on that.
Okay.
So there's several locations that have been proposed. One is left, one is right. There's even been consideration of maybe putting one or two positions in the center. So as we move things forward, we will talk with media and communications to develop...
I would just like to see that there, make sure that there's a designated area, one to make sure that the public isn't tripping over...
That's right.
...the media, but also to make sure that we're supporting the media and being able to cover, you know...
If I may, you know, much as we did for Room 234...
Right.
...we have a very designated, well-identified media area that would not inhibit any of the proceedings the city council would have. They can come and go without interruption.
How many cameras can you put in that box?
I think you could probably safely fit up to three, and obviously you could put more in if needed, but you've got three primary networks here in the city of Virginia Beach. If it's something that require more than that, we're also going to provide hookups back in this media waiting room, and they would be able to pull off of, video off of that as well.
Yeah.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
So with respect to Jessica's question, you know, just if you put them up in the front, we want to make sure that, because the current practice now is the media parks up in the front of the room, and they're invariably blocking the public's view, and it seems to me there's not much room. I would think that places that I've seen, and certainly I think in Congress, and you see that, everybody's only in the back, and it's elevated, and that may be...
Thank you for the lead-in.
I was going to say the same thing about maybe in the middle of the room and a park on a box.
What we've discussed with Mr. Julie Hill is perhaps locating them here in this media communications, and there would be a window from the media communication waiting room that allow you to see the proceedings. The council room will be tiered. The chambers will be tiered, which is different than what you have now. Everything is on a flat level now. So there's going to be a decrease in elevation of approximately 21 inches from the rear of the room to what we'll call the well of the chambers, this area here, right in the middle in front of the dais. So by putting them at the rear of the room, whether it be here in the media area or here in the waiting area, they'd be able to have a very clear view of all the proceedings because of that change in elevation.
But they'll be in the back of the speakers. That's the problem.
Right.
And that citizens come down to speak, quite frankly, they want to be seen and to have...
So that's why we're looking at, you know, positions such as here and here as alternatives to that. So as, and there may be several positions. Once again, we want to make sure that they are safe, we want to make sure that they're secure, we want to make sure that they're not interrupting the proceedings of city council.
What we could do, and this has been done some, is from the front, as you said, you had a media room, that could be a single camera that's like pool coverage. Everybody can pull, not copyrighted, they can digitally download it and integrate it into their pitch. You know, that's, that's done often where you, everybody can't have a spot, everybody has the right to pull, and if you said you have a place back there with a contact and we've got a municipal, they could just download when they, whatever it is, and stick it in there.
I think Mr. Moss's point about that, about the staff being right there in the center is well taken. I, number one, if that's the case, then you're going to have speakers that are going to be on one far side of the room or another far side of the room, and particularly if they don't speak up very well, they're going to be hard to hear, and it just seems to me like the speak, the podium for the speakers should be in the center.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything prohibiting us from moving the city attorney on the other side with the clerk and the city manager? And that area become a resource for the media?
For the media? Nothing. We were talking about four seats, so we could expand this area here to include four seats.
I think what the mayor said about the public needing, you know, to be visible as well, I think there needs to be some space where they, the media could capture that too.
We can set it up so either arrangement would work, so it's more of an operational issue and that the actual infrastructure of the building is not inhibiting the design.
Tony, I would jump in and say if we were going to put the media on one side or the other, we'd put them on the far left side, and there are some security performance features of this that we're not going to talk about today, that you have to get to that door, and I wouldn't want TV cameras and their cables and people standing there. So if we're going to, we could pick one side or the other, but if we're going to do media on one side, I'd recommend we keep them over there. on one side, I'd recommend we, we keep them over there.
City-appointed staff here. Okay. Any more discussion about this part of the suite?
That looked good.
Okay. Fantastic. And this is the, basically the south end of this suite, showing the deputy city manager's offices, the city manager, and other support spaces for them. So questions that we received, comments that we received from city council include the following. Confirm the location of the staff table in council chambers. That's that table we talked about in front of the spectators between the two podiums. We will move that back. Address the security divisions of the building. We will do so in closed session as the project moves forward about access control and things of that nature. Confirm the location of media in council chambers. We've addressed that already. Confirm egress, ingress pass in council chambers. We will talk about that moving forward in addition to the entrance width. So there was a question about, you know, how wide are the doors, things of that nature. Once again, we want to make sure there's adequate egress out of those council chambers in the event of an emergency. Confirm the public seat width and sheet, seat configuration in council chambers. Confirm the location of accessible wheelchair seating in council chambers. Wheelchair seating will be distributed throughout the building. There's, there's, excuse me, throughout the chambers. There will be five required seats, and we may just make it six to make it symmetrical, you know, so it looks good. But they will be distributed both at the front and on the back. There will be none on the, on the slope portions. Confirm the aisle width in council chambers. Confirm public restroom locations on the second floor. The restrooms are just outside of this door, right here. So they're in very close proximity to, to council chambers. And obviously, that's for the public, and there's some for staff here, and then for council, city manager staff there. And then lastly, confirm council circulation in the building. That really has to do with security, and we'll talk about that as things move forward, where council can move in and out of the building, where staff can move. So city manager comments were, include the following. Confirm the location of break room and kitchenette. Confirming the council office locations. We're going to delete one DCM executive assistant. There were five shown. We're going to drop it back to four. So it'll be a one-to-one relationship to DCM executive assistants, excuse me, DCM assistants and DCMs. Relocate the coffee niche from the back of house to the waiting room. Delete the showers. And lastly, confirm the sightlines in council chambers. So the, making sure that as we look at the plan, that the city sta, city-appointed staff here can see all the different council members.
Maybe we don't need all those showers, but we just talked about promoting people biking to work, running to work, Blue Zone Health. So now, I just know, I don't know how many, I don't do it, but a lot of people bike to work, which I think is great. Take their life in their own hands, but I think it's great. But when they get to work, what do they need?
Shower.
Well, I need that too. But maybe we don't need as many, but I, and if we're not, I'm just trying to look at the consistent of our messaging about healthy living and how people get to work and what we're encouraging, but then we don't have the infrastructure to support that. It seems to be, but if it's a cost issue, understand that too. I'm not going to fight the issue, but I'm just, think about that. I'm not saying that's got to be there, but I'm just trying to make sure we're lining up in someplace later. That's a hard thing to put back later, is plumbing.
Okay. So we'll, we'll take that under advisement to consider that as we move things forward.
It's not on my red button list or anything.
Any other questions with regard to the plans? Lastly, we want to wrap up with schedule. So as Tom said, we are completing the schematic design of the project right now. Schematic design is where we fix all the spaces in the building, make sure they're right-sized and adjacent to what they are required for their function. We'll be wrapping that up this month, and we will move forward in what's called through the design development phase, and we'll be wrapping that up in August. So we will be back to visit you sometime between now and August, probably twice. One of those times will be to discuss furniture, and another time will be to discuss the security features of the building. Any questions about schedule or anything else we've discussed this afternoon?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Tom. Thanks, Barry. Thanks, Josh. Appreciate it. See you guys.
Is the Albemarle Symposium discussion?
Well, I, I asked for five minutes just to give you an update on the activities that we have been involved in since the Albemarle Symposium that we had in April. As I had said earlier to you, the Symposium we considered very successful, had about 175 attendees who were just very enthusiastic about the opportunity to begin to create a working relationship among the stakeholders who drain to the Albemarle, which of course is the purpose of this whole thing. We're already seeing results with some partnerships already being created and meetings already taking place. Just as a reminder, you have a copy of your, at your place of the agenda, so you can see the depth and breadth of the presenters. Since then, I have also asked some of the non-staff attendees, just the regular citizens, to meet and help develop some opportunities that we can have for spreading the awareness and the knowledge of the watershed, particularly to form a basis for working with the data that we're going to have presented to us in a few months with the Dewberry Study. We feel that the next few months are, are going to be crucial for raising awareness and uniqueness of this area. Well, one of the questions that came to us was, was just what is the area that we're working with? And so the staff created this map for us. This is the southern watersheds. It's a very large area. And they have also given me some pretty interesting statistics about this. And, and the important thing for you also to know, of course, the Princess Anne District is all in the southern watersheds, but there are also portions of four other districts. So I hope that we'll, we'll come to realize that a lot more, and just how far south-north this reaches. I think that's really a surprise to everybody who has seen this map. There are approximately 146,800 people living in the Southern Rivers watershed. That's 34% of the total population of Virginia Beach. There are approximately 130,000 acres within the southern watersheds, which is approximately 66% of the total area of Virginia Beach. It's big. It's not just the little southern rural area. In this area, there's also this map, and if I can point to it, and, and this is why I'm here, so you can, because I have to tell you things. This, this map is a map that shows the areas, the lands in this area that are already protected in some fashion, conservation areas that are already protected. And, and I think from this you can see that we have some partners in this. We're just not in this all by ourselves. This area in Brown is, of course, owned by the federal government, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, with the refuges. And just think, if this area in here that was going to be Sandbridge by the Sea or some such had already approved 3,000 units to be built, had that not been purchased by the refuge, can you imagine if that were developed to that intensity today? This color is owned by the state. Of course, there's the, the state park, but then we have other localities on this side, which is, I think this is the Whitehurst Track, and then another track that the state owns. I think there's really some on this other side, too. This Burgundy is owned by the Nature Conservancy. They own something like 5,000 acres along the North Landing River in Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, and, and the Northwest River, and they have been a, a great partner for us. The pink is property that is owned by the city of Virginia Beach. And you see, a lot of this was acquired, of course, through the BRAC acquisition, but then others that were acquired through programs like the Open Space Program. Stumpy Lake is, is a part of this, which was required, acquired by the Open Space Program. And then the green are the areas that are in the Agriculture Reserve Program, the ARP. And I think what this map tells us is that, you know, we've, we've done a pretty good job over the years of looking to acquire, we and our partners, to acquire areas that are, are particularly susceptible to flooding. And I think that when we look at this map and we see just what has been acquired, we see just how, how involved all the waterways are and, and protected properties around those waterways. You know, of course, this is the Back Bay system and the North Landing River and West Net Creek. And when you look at those areas, those are the ones that we keep hearing about when we're talking about flooding and talking about drainage for, for the properties that we're dealing with. And then remember, all of this is governed by wind tides. And last weekend, when we had southwest winds for a good long time, even without the rain, we would have had flooding on the roadways. And I really think this map, it just tells so much, and that's why I wanted to show it to you today. This is a clean map over there, which simply shows some of the other of you council members where your properties are that are, are in this watershed. In the meantime, the Planning District has established a, a committee, or is establishing a committee, to talk about sea level rise. And I volunteered last week to, to work on that committee, and I told them I want to work, I want to talk about the Albemarle, because, you know, we spend so much time just talking about the Chesapeake. I think folks tend to forget that we have all of this that's draining to the Sags in an entirely different system. It's also notable that VIMS has an association in North Carolina with the Albemarle Pamlico Estering Network, APNET. And VIMS, and APNET, and the Nature Conservancy have been partners with us in this, since we started this process last summer, that we, we realized that we really needed to work together. And so all of this has been coming together, and, and I think we have, have really begun to establish a, a great partnership and a lot of enthusiasm for working together as we all deal with sea level rise through this area. So I just wanted to let you know what we're doing and, and particularly the, this information so that you can understand, and, and I hope you'll participate as we go forward. As I said, we're looking to do some things this summer that will help involve as many of the, the participants, many of the people as we can, to make them more aware that they're in this watershed, they're not in Chesapeake watershed, they're in this watershed. I mean, all the way up to Kempsville and so forth. And also more information about the, the way this particular area operates. So this is just our update, and I just wanted to let you know what I've been up to. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Any questions on that, anybody? Next item is short-term rental discussion.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. I'm Kay Wilson from the city attorney's office, and I'm here to have a, a workshop on short-term rentals. We're trying, going to try this afternoon to figure out what you all have a consensus on and what we still need to discuss. So hopefully, by the time we finish, we'll have a consensus on everything. I'm an optimist. I have at your, at your package a copy of the PowerPoint, as well as a copy of the Jones' ordinance, and a copy of the Moss ordinance, and a copy of what would be the regulations for the short-term rental district and a, the zoning map corrections. I also have bigger maps of all of the short-term overlays, so you can actually see streets and figure out where you are, because this is not going to be able to be seen that well, I know. And also the matrix that we had done earlier for you all, that is also updated and at your place. Well, let's start with something I think we have consensus on. And wait a minute, I got to figure out how to do this. Here we go. Home sharing. I believe we had decided that home sharing, which is a rental of less than 30 days in an owner's primary residence, in which the owner is present for the rental, would be permitted throughout the sitting with only two conditions, that you have to register with the commissioner and that you have to pay your taxes. That's pretty much, I think, the consensus that I had seen on this. Now, other short-term rental conditions here are not applicable. There are no regulations on parking, on occupancy, on noise other than that which is in the city code. So as long as you're good with that and don't want to add any other conditions, we can look at this as being a consensus item.
Anybody disagree with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the overlays, because this one is the one that's mandated for us all. This is the overlay at Sandbridge. It will cover all of Sandbridge. It's essentially the SSD. And so that will be the Sandbridge Short-Term Rental Overlay District mandated by the legislature. We're good with that, as good as we can be. The Oceanfront Resort District is not an overlay, but it is a zoning district that will be permitted to have short-term rentals with the conditions that we'll get to in just a minute. This is at the oceanfront. It runs from approximately 45th Street down to the inlet. That is the Oceanfront Resort District. It's been a zoning district since approximately 2012, and it would be allowed there.
You okay with that, John?
You know, we still need to get some input. I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of residential actually in that, you know, just eyeballing it.
Yeah.
There's not that much residential in there, but, you know, certainly I think we'd want to get some input from the civic leagues before I said yay or no.
Is all those new ones that were just built?
Yep. Well, they're actually in there, I think. Those were, if I'm reading that right.
No, they should be.
Should be.
Yes, they are on there.
They're in the ORD.
Built specifically for that.
Next is the North End Overlay, which is essentially from-
Thank you.
-49th to 89th. It would be what has already been created as the North End Overlay, and these are all zoned R5R. Okay, those are the areas we've been discussing as areas that would have the permitted short-term rentals. Now, there are two new overlays. This one is in Ocean Park. This was requested by Mr. Jones. It does run from the Lesnar, I mean, I have a, a pointer, from the Lesnar all the way down to Bay Lake Pines, out to Shore Drive, and then Marlin Bay to the bay.
But it does not include Bay Lake Pines.
It does not include Bay Lake Pines.
This is- This is done, this was done at the request of the Ocean Park Civic League.
That's important to know.
Have you all talked to Croatan and what?
We have not had any, and we have not heard of any interest in Croatan. We're doing what we kind of-
Definitely have short-term rentals there now.
Yeah. You might want to reach out to Croatan.
Yeah, I, 100%, I mean, I know, I know there's short-term rentals there right now.
Short-term rentals everywhere.
No, but it's, but it's a seaside community, just like the North End is a seaside community.
There's also been a request by Vice Mayor Wood for a Cape Henry, Cape Story overlay. This would run from First Landing Park to Great Neck Road, from Long Creek to the bay. This is the Resort and Conference Center.
So we include all of Cape Henry by the Sea?
Yes.
Yeah, this was, this was requested by a number of folks over there. I've had a couple of meetings with civic leagues, and they're not taking an official position on this, near as I can tell, but there are quite a few short-term rentals operating in there, and it's similar. You talk about Croatan, it's similar to seaside type community, and, and there haven't really been the issues that you've experienced in, in Bay.
What's the zoning of Cape Henry by the Sea?
Cape, well, it's Cape Story and Cape Henry Shore, so.
What's the zoning of that? Looks like that might be R10.
Okay, what is, do you know the zoning?
No, I need to pull them out. Zoning.
There are multiple zoning districts in that area. Majority would be R7, R5, with some R10. There may be some A12 scattered.
How about what's in between this part that's, right in here, what is all of that?
That is R10. That is R10.
That's what I thought.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Rosemary.
Not that excited about R10.
I might make this complicated, honestly, I'm not. But there's so many different neighborhoods, and so many diverse thoughts. When we get ready to have public hearings on these, I don't, I'm not quite so sure we should do all the overlays in one night. We might want to spread them out and do hearings on a couple of them at a time. One thing, I think, it'll be hard for us to keep them all straight, but also, you know, to give each neighbor, each district a fair hearing, just to break them out.
Piggyback, if I could, on Rosemary, I think it would be good even before the council public hearing, is likely doesn't go to those areas and have, find the closest public facility, and have a detailed public hearing on, so everybody, when they come to the hearing, is well-educated on what it is and what it isn't.
Is there going to be a process then moving forward, where neighborhoods to enter into an overlay in the future? Or is this, if you don't want to be in an overlay in the next six months, you're not going to be, have that opportunity?
Yes, ma'am, we'll get there.
Okay, sorry, didn't mean to jump the gun.
Yeah, you jumped the gun, sorry.
Henley has a question.
Sort of similar to what those thoughts are. I just think we really have to have notification to all of the property owners, what's being considered, and some opportunity for feedback. Because, you know, we can't just go by, well, we've heard from a few people, or we've heard from a civic organization, because we've learned that that's not always representative. We can, we send all of these property owners tax bills. I think we ought to send some kind of notice to each of the people, each of the property owners in all of these proposed areas, what's being considered, and what it would involve, so that somebody, two years from now, saying, when did they slip this through?
Ms.
I really want to know that they're all notified.
Ms. Henley, they have to be all notified by state code to create an overlay district. They will all be notified by the Planning Department with a copy of the ordinance, and that, it will come before the Planning Commission on a certain date. So, we have to do that before they can create an overlay. It only has to be done approximately five days before the meeting, but we'll make sure it goes out earlier than that.
Can we make sure that before whatever goes out, that council has a chance to review what it says? Because ultimately, we're going to be held accountable for what it does say.
Review what, John?
I'd like to see, I realize the ordinance will have, but I'm sure there's a cover letter, or something, or some kind of fact sheet, or frequently asked questions. All I'm asking is that before it goes out, that we all have a chance to look at it and see what's going to go out, because ultimately, we're going to get the calls, and people are going to hold us accountable for what it says. And it'd be good if we all just know what it's going to say before it goes out.
Yes, John.
That's protection for the staff, as well as for us. So, is this, these notifications would go out prior to the Planning Commission meeting?
Prior to the Planning Commission, yes, sir.
Okay, so, so people would be notified and have an opportunity to speak then, and then subsequently, council, okay?
Subsequently, council. This would be the city, this would be Ocean Park, Cape Henry, North End, ORD, and Sandbridge.
Ms. Henley.
Croatan would be roughly in this area before you get to Dan Neck.
Ms. Henley has a question.
Yeah, just to further complicate things, I would really like for this to have some kind of basis, similar to our SSDs, such as, you know, we have to have at least 60% of the property owners indicate in writing that they want to be included. You know, we can hear a public hearing, and we can think we think something, but it may not be what it is. I would, I mean, this is pretty heavy, because we're going to change, or we're going, I think once we do something like this in any neighborhood, we're not going to take it back. I think this is permanent.
It's a check file, I agree with you on that.
And I really think we need to take all the extraordinary steps that we need to take, because if we don't, I mean, we might do it, still regret it, but at least, I think we'll feel like we've done everything we could. But I, this is, this is pretty big.
These five areas, I had to count again, these five areas, which would have by right short-term rentals, comprise approximately 73% of the registered, registered short-term rentals for a specific date. It changes every day, but there was a date where we got numbers. It would be 1335 out of 1830. Just, just numbers.
I think Ms. Henley's point, though, is that you're going to have people who live in these districts, in these overlay districts, who are not going to know about this, no matter what we do, unless they get something in writing notifying them that it's, that it's being considered. And, and then, once it's done, it's done.
Yes, sir.
And, and they find out they've got a short-term rental next door to them, and they're going to come out and want it changed, is what's going to happen.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to be difficult to do.
Well, we're going to have, we'll run into all kinds of things.
The other side of that coin, too, where somebody has a home that they purchased with the thought that they were going to use that as part of their investment, and all of a sudden, it's not in that overlay, and we're going to tell them that that's now longer, now an illegal use. I mean.
That's why I had 60% in the, what I proposed originally, was that I want to make sure that we're working on behalf of the majority of the citizens and property owners who are being affected in this thing, so.
I would go to 70%. I mean, it's, it's going to be heavy.
Here we have the creep.
Somebody who, who gets a really bad one next door to them, their life can be ruined.
Absolutely.
Yes, John.
Can I ask just one more? Kay, do you, within that analysis of, of these geographic areas incorporating 73% of the registered short-term rentals, is that through Phil's, Kellum's office?
Yes, sir.
The, are, were there other pockets that had, like, big percentages that could be identified in a smaller geographic area, or was the balance of that amount pretty much scattered throughout the city?
Balance is scattered. Some of it is, it's mainly clustered, I would say, along the, the bay and the oceanfront. I mean, that's where it ends up being clustered. Okay. Things that, what about the rest of the city? So, say we've got the overlays done, what should we do with the rest of the city? There are really two options. One is, well, three options, really. One is that you, everybody else gets a conditional use permit. That would be Mr. Jones's ordinance. Everybody else, if they wanted one, would have to come before council and Planning Commission and get a conditional use permit. Or, they would simply not be allowed. If you're not in an overlay, or in one of the other districts, they would not be allowed. That was part of Mr. Moss's ordinance. And third, is grandfathering. And this would allow someone who, by a certain date, and we have to determine the date, too, if they had registered by a certain date, they could be grandfathered, and could come in as a permitted use. This would require us to make a decision about what date that we wanted to grandfather, and what about alterations? If you make alterations, are you then not grandfathered? Because we don't want the little cottage with two rooms to become, you know, huge and still grandfathered. It's really a different product then. So, this is a decision we need to make. Here we are. Conditional use permits will be a great deal of work for you, as well as for the Planning Department. If you don't permit them, that's going to be a great deal of work for the Planning Department and the City Attorney's Office, because we're going to have to get rid of all of these that are out there. The 26%, I guess.
Ms. Henley has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe you're not ready for questions yet, you were still.
No, I'm good.
If we have conditional use permits, okay, what would be a basis for denying?
We would, we would have guidance in regard to the conditional use permits. We haven't gotten to the point of actually coming up with those, because we don't know where we're going yet. I'm trying to make sure we know where we're going before we really spend the great deal of time to figure out what kind of requirements, we could say. But it would be things like that it didn't fit into the area, that it didn't fit into the neighborhood. It couldn't be based solely upon neighborhood opposition, but it could be based upon zoning issues.
Well, I know I've raised several times the size of the lots in the agricultural area.
Yes, ma'am.
And just the practically unlimited number of bedrooms that could be built in a single-family house, if that's what we're still going by. And I just think there had, there needs to be some upper limit of what would be considered a short-term rental, single-family residence. We've got to be realistic about, about that, or we're going to wind up having, I can see in the agricultural areas, a lot of mini hotels.
Yes, John.
Were you going to cover the last one before you went back to conditional use permits?
I can.
Yeah, because you were going through all of them, and then you went back to the top.
I kind of, I counted them off between the last and.
Well, because that was a key part of my proposal, was overlay districts.
Yes. So, the creation of other overlays.
She cut it out.
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Okay, the creation of other overlays, they will be in all zoning districts. They won't be limited to any particular zoning districts. We would take an area of the city, and they would have to meet a percentage in Mr. Jones's and, I think, Mr. Moss's, too, it's 60%. And so, and we also say that you cannot create an area of the city for your short-term overlay. It really needs to be an area, and you can't gerrymander, you know, to make your 60%. It needs to be King's Grant, or it needs to be, you know, Bishop's Gate, or it needs to be the actual subdivision or area of the city.
Yes, Rosemary.
Well, I know when our committee looked at the, this, one of the committees, because it is a committee, that looked at this, I mean, Jack, Dr. Davis kept saying, you can't put the toothpaste back in. And felt pretty strongly about that. I, I think it's really hard if people have been allowed, and they're following the rules, and they went and they got their, they registered with Phil Kellum, and they've been paying their taxes, and all of a sudden say, well, you can't do that anymore. So, I mean, I think it's really hard to take something away from someone when they followed all the rules and they've been doing it, so.
And that, that's what the grandfathering would, would allow you all to do, is to set a date, say 1/118. And if you were registered by that date, then it's real easy for, for planning, because they can say you were either registered, or you weren't registered. And they'll have, they'll be able to, to make that determination.
Don't have a date in the future, but a date that's already occurred.
You could do that, or you could do the date that you adopted. I mean, you can do any, anything you all want to do.
No, I think it's most forms of storage. You don't want everybody just rushing out to get this in. But I think, because it sort of takes away the fairness of, I've been doing this, I paid my taxes, I registered, I did everything right.
And if you're, if you're listening, you know it's going on.
What's alterations? I'm not sure I know it.
If we go ahead and grandfather people, and we grandfather anybody who is registered, if they had a little two-bedroom cottage, and they had a big lot, and they decided to make that two-bedroom cottage 13 bedrooms, because they were doing so well, we would take them out of grandfathering, because we grandfathered the little cottage, not the 13.
So, if I can, so that's.
That's just a suggestion.
Like an expansion of a non-conforming use? So, as long as it's just cosmetic, or something like that, it wouldn't trigger it?
Yeah, a little deck, we're not concerned of, but they would, we would need to set a limit.
Start adding square footage.
Yes.
(inaudible).
Yes, John.
I've been reading lots of newspapers around the country, this is, and people have gone back and taken, and put the toothpaste back in the toothpaste tube, they have done that, or put huge fines, which I don't propose at all. But, getting back to Barbara's point about the conditional use permit, one of the things that communities have found, is as they've made votes, just like HOAs have to deal with, and you set a body of precedent, you really don't have the discretion that you think you have, in a reality, anyone that meets that, the precedent you yourself have set, which isn't the neighbor complaining, but have the parking, independent of what people want, you are now either litigating while you're denying them useful their property, or you're granting it. So, the conditional use permit, in short order, becomes very quickly, just collecting the fee and the process, but becomes a by-right grant, because you can't legally defend deviating from the very precedents you've set. And that's what I've read from other communities who've looked at that and found out it was not what they thought, and people had expectation that they thought they could, if they say no, their neighbor couldn't have one, because they didn't support it. And that's far from true. And I think that's the point Ms. Henley, I think, was making.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Barbara.
Well, conditional use permits technically are in perpetuity.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, with, one may operate for 10 years, and everything's fine, but then the property is sold, and somebody else buys it, and then it's a nightmare. Is there a way that we can issue these conditional use permits that don't run with the property?
No, ma'am.
If that does happen, and it's sold, I mean, can the conditional use permit be revoked?
You can revoke a conditional use permit. It requires the same process that you had to get one. It has to come back to you all. The plan, the zoning administrator would send a letter, and say, you're in violation of this, and this, and this, and this, and I'm taking it back to City Council for a revocation. That's in the, the city zoning ordinance.
We can't, we can't do a conditional use permit that is, that has a term to it?
We can do a term to it. What we can't do is say, it's not going to run with the land if you sell it, or you, you have somebody else running it, we're going to take away your conditional use permit. That would require legislative action.
But you could have a conditional use permit that was granted for a 10-year period.
Yes, sir.
So, we could do a conditional use permit for three years, or something like that?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and then have administrative approval. If they are doing fine, then administratively, they just redo it.
Yes, Shannon.
And could then it be, if they fail to come back within a year or two years after it lapses or something, then it's null and void at that point? They can't go back?
Well, it would be, it would be void when their time ran out. It would be for three years, and they needed to either get to zoning and get a letter saying, hi, we're going to do it for three more years, or we'll do it forever now. But, they would have to come in.
Yes, Jessica.
I have a question about the overlays, kind of a question, comment. With the, the neighborhoods that wouldn't be automatically considered, like the Oceanfront or Sandbridge, if I, as a civic league leader, wanted to come in and create the overlay, I assume we would put that burden of responsibility on the, that individual who wanted to create the overlay to collect these signatures?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, just in working with the couple neighborhoods that I have worked with, on any time they have to get any kind of petitions, I feel like if we're going to do this, we have to come up with a better mousetrap for how they collect this information. Because what the feedback I've received is that signatures get discounted, they, you know, some, they can't always reach everybody, you know. I feel like there should be a way that we have a website, that if you're in X neighborhood, we upload that information of the people who live there, who own property, and they can log on, you know, with a QR code or something, and say, yes, I am in favor of this, or no, I'm not. That way, we have a more validated method of collecting this information, because otherwise, we're going to have to, one of the other situations of a neighbor really, really adamantly, you know, in favor of it, or a neighbor really adamantly opposed to it, and their opinion or feedback could be discounted, because something's not clearly received. So, that's just my concern with the overlay, is making sure that we have a thorough process for collecting that information.
Go ahead.
Okay, and these are the conditions, mainly, mainly the conditions for the short-term rental, that we believe there is consensus on. So, let me know if there's not. That posting a summary of the city code provisions, that trash will be placed in the automated bins, and it will be picked up on a Saturday in, in Sandbridge, we'll add that in. That you need $1 million in insurance, that you need the maximum, the maximum occupancy is three per bedroom plus two.
I don't agree with that one. I think it's far too liberal.
Say that again.
It's far too liberal. I think that this.
Which one, you're talking about?
Maximum occupancy.
Maximum occupancy.
I think the standards is, industry standard is two per bedroom, and that's, you know, meets more of the code size, unless this is something that could be maybe a, a condition that someone could, if they've got really large bedrooms, they might qualify. But, when I look at, at Lexington and Fairfax, I mean, they're much more conservative in what they're allowing. You know, this is, this is, I just think, too liberal. I like the conservative.
Yes, Jessica.
I, I just have a comment about the insurance limit. Are we going to require that the city be listed as an additional insured, and the, and the homeowner furnish their certificate annually?
If we should.
Well, so, just being my industry, what I run into a lot.
Well, so, just being my industry, what I run into a lot is people will purchase insurance, submit it to the person requesting the coverage, and then terminate it a month later. And a million dollars of liability insurance, assuming they've purchased the right specific product, is not very expensive. I mean, you're, you're looking like 50 bucks a year, maybe 100. So, if we're not, if we're not holding them accountable, we're basically saying to the public, "This person has a million dollars of liability insurance, but then something happens, they let it lapse," then what, what was the point?
Well, we'll make sure the city is an additional insured.
Or additional interest, or certificate order.
So, going back to that insurance, if there's, I think that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, because if there's a specific entity that owns multiple properties, are they going to, does that say there has to be $1 million of liability, I assume it's liability insurance we're talking about, $1 million of liability insurance for each location?
Yes, sir.
Or for that entity?
No, for the, each location. Each location will have a million dollars.
So, you're, what we're looking at is a premise liability policy, which would need to be specified as well, because that, there's a difference between premise liability and general liability and personal liability. And if you have your homeowner's policy written, but you're not, you haven't written it as a rental dwelling property, you're not adequately insured, and an insurance company could decline your claim. So, I mean, there's a lot of, I feel like, just broadly putting million-dollar liability, somebody's just going to call up an agent and be like, "I need a million dollars," and that agent's going to use their discretion to just write whatever they think applies.
And I think, I think that's very important, because Jessica knows what this stuff is, and I would imagine, most of the people that do this have traditional homeowner-type policies, as opposed to the policies you may have if you have rental property or something like that, you have more business policies. So, I think, I think we need to make sure that we tailor it to-
Premise liability, yeah.
Well, but, I mean, honestly, tailor it towards something that's accessible for the average homeowner to obtain, so they, so they can get it from, from a firm like this, rather than having to go out into, into a wider, more expensive market, because invariably, that's going, that'll be what drops. And even if the city's listed as additional named insured, and theoretically, is it going to get the updates when, when somebody cancels or doesn't pay their, their insurance? That'll slip through the cracks with their, all the other paperwork coming into the city.
Well, you can have liability insurance that covers more than one location.
You can purchase a liability policy that, that will schedule multiple locations.
That covers multiple locations. I mean, I have it.
They are.
And, so-
But it's, it's also not through a traditional homeowner's policy.
No, it's not a homeowner's policy.
And, but see, most of the folks doing this are going to get it, and I don't want to say the names of traditional companies, but, but-
They're, they're going to, they're going to call their agents, say, "Do I have a million dollars liability coverage?" Their agent's going to open up their homeowner's policy and say, "Yes," and not ask any more questions, and that's going to be the end of that conversation.
Yes, John.
This gets back to the point about when you're communicating to the public what's happening. I think for each bullet where we think there's a consensus, or whatever comes up, there needs to be the sheet, or the several sheets behind it, saying how, how we are going to make this executable, and how we are going to assure compliance with the things we say are going to pass, for just all the reason that Jessica just stated, you know, pointed out. It's easy to make these statements, but what really counts is, what is our capacity, and what is the process by which these things, which we think have a public value, a public good, are going to be achieved? And so, I think, without seeing that, it's hard to say I concur, because I don't know that in effect, that the assurance that we're trying to give people is actually executable. And when we say it is, then, and then the public says, "Yeah, that's an execution that we can tolerate," there's another piece to that. Not just what we think we can enforce, but the public wants to be enforced upon, is a key part of that feedback, I think. Then we can say we have a consensus that that's the way to go. But I think we really have to know how that's going to be implemented, for anything that we put on a slide, you know, it's like PowerPoint. It's like a billboard. You drive past the billboard, and there's no town. Well, we need to see what the town looks like.
And, and I guess I need to explain, too, that this was just to say, "Hey, we're going to do that." We, of course, will be able to tell you at a later date how we will get there, but at this point, we're trying to figure out what we need to get to.
I just want the viewing public that's not here, that's watching, to know that there's a lot of homework still to go.
Yes. Yes, sir. And these, I wrote these just as bullet points, so-
Did a good job.
Okay, the next one is that you're allowed a four-square-foot sign, two by two. That's apparently what they have at Sandbridge, and that's what they would like. And any signs identifying the structure, if you remember at Sandbridge, they have names, and they're, they don't count as part of your four-foot sign. Also, the contact person is required who can be present in 30 minutes or less at the site. We have a special event permit for any group that's 50 or over, with 100 people maximum, and you can have three of these a year, a special event.
Yes, Jim.
Can we go back to the contact person?
Surely.
Is it a contact person, or his designee?
Yes, that's how it's written. I'll make sure that, that's, that's what I recall as being what we were going to go with.
If somebody's out of town, and they, they're allowing, you know, their brother-in-law or somebody to do it, then, okay.
Mm-hmm. You have to register and pay taxes. No amplified sound after 10:00 PM or before 10:00 AM. So, if you have amplified sound outside after 10:00 or before 10:00, then you're in violation. Rental contracts, one per week for a single-family structure, and two per week for a multi-family structure.
Yes, Mrs. Lynn.
We had an email from a lady who lives in a duplex.
Yes, ma'am.
And the person on the other side does short-term rentals, and it makes her life miserable. Are we really saying that duplexes can be two per week? I mean, what's a multi-family?
Okay, a duplex is, is considered by the zoning ordinance to be single-family. But if you have two duplexes, which is kind of a difference without a meaning, because if you have two duplexes, each one could do one a week. So, you would have two in that structure.
But the ownership would be, it would be by ownership. I mean, if it, different people, I mean, it's, one person lives there and doesn't do short-term rentals.
And they, yeah, in your situation, there would be one a week.
I just want to know, what is multi-family?
Mm-hmm. That's in, that's also in the, in the ordinance. Okay? I just didn't list it out.
I, just because we're under, I don't agree personally with the one-per-week limit. I, I think there should be more than, I think you have people who travel on weekends, and I think you have people who travel weekday. And I, I'd be more, it'd be more palatable to me to go with just a broad two-per-week general. I get that there are issues with multi, multi-family units, but, I mean, I know people who rent their houses out, and they have people who travel during the week, and they have people who travel during the weekend. And when are we, when are we designating that the week stops, or starts?
I think we're going to do a rolling week.
Okay.
Yes, Jim.
I just, I agree with Jessica on, on that. Well, I think it needs to be, needs to be looked at, because I, first off, I think it's extremely difficult to enforce, because if somebody, you know, decides they're, they're going to rent from Tuesday to Thursday, and, and then they've got somebody else coming in on Friday, well, is that the second week? Because does their week start, or whatever? Really, this, this is going to primarily be an issue during the summer, I think. And I think it's, I think we need to be more geared towards, more geared towards that. I'm not exactly sure how to get there, but it would just seem to me that, that there's a better way to say that. In order to preserve, you know, the worry that the neighbors would have with, you know, house turning over every day, or something like that, which, which is what we don't want. But, but I think Jessica's exactly right, that there are people that, that rent weekly, and, or during the week, and then on weekends.
I think, I think two per week is fair, but I, doing one is going to-
I don't really see a distinction between multi-family and single-family either, and I don't understand why there would be two permitted in a place where there's theoretically a lot more people there already. It just seems to me that would be, that would be an issue. So, I, I think that's something we need to, we need to look at, or have Planning Commission look at.
Yes, Ms. Henley.
The issue that, you know, I keep hearing back from, well, all of you get the same emails, is people in a single-family neighborhood who just see this constant turnover of strangers. And, you know, are you going to allow strangers next door to somebody twice a week, or once a week? I mean, it's, I think that's the issue that, that I keep hearing from people, is there's just always somebody straying. You know, you go buy a home, and you're looking for a stable, single-family neighborhood, and you think you've got a stable, single-family neighborhood, and then all of a sudden, you've got a short-term rental next to you, and you don't, never know who's there. And this is, I think, the issue. And how do we deal with that, and provide people some feeling of security, that they don't have this massive turnover? Maybe we limit a certain number of times a year that it can be rented, or something, I don't know. But that's the issue, is the strangers, the turnover of strangers.
I don't know how it would be enforced.
And that would be very difficult to enforce. This actually says that, the ordinance actually says that you could have two-
Bob, and then John.
Within, every seven days. It does days. So, that's why I say we have a rolling week, that that's how, that you would count that.
That's zero teeth on that.
Yeah, I'm just reluctant, and since we're issuing business license for these places, that we preclude people from the opportunity to run their business to the max level, and, you know, generate income, and hence, you know, bring taxes in. And, you know, the thing is, I can appreciate Mrs. Henley's concern, but the point is, there's always changes in neighborhoods that go on, and there are always going to be bad neighbors, even in long-term neighborhoods. You know, we have military to constantly change in and everything. We constantly have changing neighborhoods. But the point is, though, you know, you know, people are running a business to make some money, or extra money, and everything. I don't think we should be barriers to that. You know, I think, you know, but I think, you know, I think Johnny's right, you know, too, is a fair compromise. And, you know, once again, if we impose all these other restrictions about making sure that we, they have contacts, and, you know, the codes are being enforced, and the rules are being enforced, I think that would be adequate. And I agree also with the point, it's rough to enforce.
I think addition to that, it needs to be consistent. I don't think there should be one rule for one set of housing, and another rule for another setting of housing. I didn't mean to cut you off, John.
First, John earned first, and then John lost.
That's, you know, now that we're at the end of the consensus component, you know, enforceability is something that we've talked about this entire time. And certainly, you know, for those that really are looking for these protections, you know, I think it's beholden to us to make sure that we've got something that can actually be enforced. And so, you know, my question to you, Kay, really is, of these ones here, I mean, how enforceable are they? I mean, certainly, if we're going to have an overlay areas where it's a by-right use, then can you ever take away a by-right use because somebody didn't follow any of these rules?
Yes. You can take them to Circuit Court, and you can have them, an injunction against them doing it. Takes two years.
Okay.
And you understand. And, and you can get them that way.
And then, and then, but, but it's still associated with the property, so that property still has that right to operate as a short-term rental. So, the injunction goes in to the court. Does the court end up ruling that that property forevermore can no longer be used as a short-term?
That short-term rental cannot be done on that property. If they do, then we can take them to court for a show cause, and if they're subject to court sanctions at that point. These, if-
What's the likelihood of a court actually removing that property right, because somebody didn't show up in 30 minutes or less?
Probably slim. I would agree with you, probably slim. This is all kind of-
I think we need to be honest in terms of-
If it's cumulative, they-
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, we would never take them for one thing, or that, you know.
Yeah, I understand. But I mean, we, but we don't want, you know, the homeowners, the barbers talking to, that have, you know, somebody that's actually on a wall right next to them, thinking that, you know, these people are going to have to step and do this, or the city's going to really come down on them, and they're going to fix it. Because I-
I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a judge, but my guess is, a judge is going to tell them, "Shape up. And if you have to come back here, and I have to listen to this again," I'm going to do something about it. That's probably what's going to happen.
And so, then in year three, then that, the adjacent neighbor will get some relief.
John?
Two things. One, I do think, shouldn't make distinctions between the classes of the property, and probably that scheme isn't that enforceable. But what it does say, because I think you have to look at this in conjunction with not making this by-right or conditional use, because when people see this, then that people, when they're informed out there trying to get that 60 percent, we follow the same procedure we do with dredging, because that's the way you know you have informed consent, not just signing an online petition. But you're signing a legal affidavit, and the city attorney office prepares them, you get them signed, they get witnesses, and then that's incontrovertible about what people have done, and it's fully informed consent, because that's what the community needs, and that's what we need, and that's what the staff needs to make sure we've done that. Well, then these things are going to make the people who live in those communities who don't already have this as a well-established pattern of rental, they're going to think a lot harder, because they're going to realize how unenforceable that is. And I suspect, as you're seeing out on some of the West Coast already, you're going to see people going to civil court and seeking civil damages for their own inconvenience, and then letting the judges award, and fines and whatnot. And then people have a way of, if something's really egregious, they're finding civil action as a, as a course of action. And people generally, if they're that bad, people have a right to insure their property, and there is a vehicle for people to do that. The city isn't always the first course, and the first recourse to protecting people's private property rights, because there's two people there, the people that are doing an activity, and the people who are not. And if it's egregious enough, then people are going to do something about it, I do believe. But in people that, say, it's in Bay Lake Pines, they know 60 percent of the people have to sign, and based on what I heard, I doubt that's likely going to happen. But in the event they did, they all would have signed that affidavit. They all would have known what these, whatever these things in the future are, and they would have signed up that, knowing that the likelihood that, even if they were an offender, that anyone would change is slim. And I think that's probably about all we can reasonably do, I think.
How, how much more we got here? Okay.
Requirements for which there is no consensus. I was optimistic with the last ones, but these are parking. This is parking. Right now, parking is required onsite. I'll tell you, the North End and the ORD, it's going to be extremely difficult, if not impossible, to have onsite parking. They just don't have it. Then we, we've gone to multi-family, where you get two per unit. You have to have two parking spaces per unit, that would be the whole thing. Or, single-family, you'd have to have one per bedroom. The third option was to go with a plan, have the zoning administrator, who would have guidelines for himself, that would be written, to approve if there was on-street parking. That if you needed on-street parking to meet your parking requirements, you would have to submit a plan to the zoning administrator, and he would approve it. Because you, in, in the North End, you could get, you could rent spaces in one of the garages, or you could have a space somewhere. And if that was one of your options, and your only option, that may very well be just as good as having it onsite.
This has been great. I think we've had a lot of good comments here on this. But in order to try to come to some conclusion as to what we wanted to, I think what we probably need to do is, Kay, could you write up a questionnaire that we could distribute to the council members, so they could write down what their, what their thoughts are on each one of these items?
Yes, sir.
And then, we could see if there's some consensus on some items, or all of them, or not, and find out whether we have something to move forward with.
Okay.
Would you do that?
I can get that out, yes, sir.
Okay. I think that's probably the next step that we need to take. It's been great. Everybody's participated well, but, you know, we need something a little firmer, I think. Council is a body, and if we could get it in writing, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Everybody agree?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, Kay.
Thank you.
Across the country, no one's coming up with any really good solution, I can tell you that. Across the country, no one's-
But that was good discussion.
No one's coming up with any good solutions.
That was good.
San Diego's over two years, and still no decision.
All right. Next item, Mr. City Man- All right. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We were contemplating some administrative expansion of the Town Center Special Service District Oversight, and so we've got an ordinance headed your way first week in June, and I didn't want to present it to you without giving you an explanation. So Deputy City Manager, Ron Williams, is going to walk us through this.
Mayor, Members of Council, and actually, the title on the agenda, that's my fault for not catching that. It really should be transition, not expansion, and I'll, and I'll walk you through the why on that here. For more than a year, but predominantly officially in a letter to us from the Central Business District Association, there has been a discussion about the Town Center event programming. I'm going to give you a brief background thumbnail sketch of the SSD, the area, the revenues that are generated for that, that have supported this program, and then talk about some of the activities we've had, which has been partially managed through our resort office and the CBB, but then also in our SGA office of planning. And so it's been a multidisciplined team that's had oversight for this through the years. And then our recommendation for how we can transition this based on that discussion that's been happening. So as a reminder, the SSD was established in 2002, a special service district, primarily to address the garages that were our investment there, along with the infrastructure, the streets, the sidewalks, and other public facilities such as lighting and benches, things of that nature. It's based on the additional assessment of 45 cents per hundred of assessed value, and the assessments have grown through the years that have given us the ability to support those investments that we've made as each block evolved. Of course, it's basic, the basic boundaries of independence, Virginia Beach Boulevard, Columbus, and Constitution, but then also includes the garage with Dick's Sporting Goods, but does not include the Taco Bell and surface parking lot that's there. So this is the existing district. Its use primarily is for the oversight of those activities, for, to support the infrastructure, the garages, the maintenance, garage repairs, lighting, as I mentioned, landscaping, security in the public parking, and the equipment necessary to support those garages. The assessments have grown, this is post-recessionary here that we see, and this, and this new growth that's projected in these, is taken into account in fiscal year 20, for example, Block Nine, with the, with the Z Theater and the apartments and the retail that will be there. And so as such, we also see a projection in revenues. Revenues have been increasing as development has continued in the Town Center. The revenues predominantly are through the real estate assessment, but then also there are parking fees that are, that are generated as well. The expenses, again, are basically the administrative and contracted support for those activities. Predominantly, it's in parking, the actual hiring of the parking vendor that we have, and the activities that we're doing in that, CIP projects related to the parking infrastructure, and then you'll notice here, entertainment. At some time during this, the evolution of the Town Center, entertainment was added, and I'm going to walk you through that now. So Town Center event programming has been a contracted service through Beach Events, or through IMG, I Am Going, and Beach Events, as we commonly refer to them, since 2007. And over this past year, and understanding that there is a difference in approach on the events for a central business district versus events at the oceanfront, the types of events that you may have, there's been ongoing conversation about trying to have an evolution in those events. There's been a lot of hands-on discussions on, on each event, and also with, with Beach Events about this. And over this past year, as we were renegotiating and extending the contract for Beach Events, we talked about a transition opportunity, and that was agreed by all parties to do that. But they, we did have them go ahead and plan events for mid-May through the end of the fiscal year, and also continue in their contract to do Last Night on the Town. The types of events that we've been, that Beach Events has done for us have basically been the three categories. I mentioned the oceanfront, but where Town Center comes in is two categories under general entertainment and then events. So general entertainment has been the type of thing that you see on the plaza on a, on a daily evening, where some, a small acoustic, or someone with, you know, horn instrument might be playing, or a small band. That started out originally as just weekend activities, but it transitioned from larger events into nightly activities, really at the request of the Central Business District, and ongoing conversations about what type of atmosphere they wanted to have. Events is the more major ones that we've seen, where there's perhaps craft brew, or car shows, or other ethnic events that were happening. We had Philippine Festival at one time in there. And so each year, the program has changed, but there has been this transition from the larger events into more small-scale and nightly entertainment. And all of this has been coordinated with the Town Center Advisory Board, which was established a number of years ago, and appointed, appointed by the city manager. How this has been supported is with $200,000 on an annual basis from the SSD, and then also predominantly because of Last Night on the Town being viewed as a tourist-type event, the tip fund has supported it. And then the event sponsor, Beach Events, was required to have, contribute $30,000 in sponsorship to that. That's how the contract has been to date. Related to this also, in ongoing efforts to enhance the experience for the growing number of residents, but also visitors and businesses in Town Center, through the years, wayfinding or place-making activities such as holiday decorations have been expended through the CIP. And over the past couple of years in particular, Rob has been able to project, you know, what's the baseline for those type of activities that have been done on an ad hoc basis. And so this year, in the adopted budget that, that we have for the next coming fiscal year, there was, there was a new CIP project that called Town Center Reinvestment, basically to solidify this type of ad hoc activity that's been ongoing, and it, and it is for these type of purposes, public art, enhanced landscaping, things that create a sense of place, if you saw that, the light at Snowglobe that was in the plaza last Christmas, and again, an ongoing desire to have a wayfinding project launched in Town Center. So the idea of moving forward is that through a service agreement, with CBDA being the coalition of businesses that also represent the residents in the Town Center, the individual property owners, anyone who is being taxed, and they have been the partner and participant in the Town Center Advisory Board, that we could establish a service agreement similar to other central business districts, similar to how we have managed the Vibe District activities over the past year and a half with the Vibe District Association, that the entertainment and programming and those revitalization activities could be transitioned to CBDA through the service agreement. And then we would have an oversight committee and continue to have the Town Center Advisory Committee is, as the place where we vet those type of expenditures. So if, if this is agreeable, we would schedule this ordinance for June 5, and that would give us time through the month of June, then to prepare for a transition from Beach Events to CBDA to carry out the month of July through, through the end of the year.
Shannon?
A couple of things. One is, I know the Beach Events contract was an RFP that we put it out to companies to bid on the actual work, so why not do that in this regard, instead of automatically handing it to CBDA? And I understand the relationship with CBDA.
Yeah.
And the second is, what about the Lynn Haven Mall area and the Lynn Haven Business District, and we can't just leave, I don't know, I'm just having a problem.
These are only through, I'll start with the last one. These are only through monies that are taxed there for the special service district.
Gotcha.
And they're, you know, they're limited to that 200,000 and the CIP, the 150, that all comes from the SSD. When it was RFP before, Beach Events was the only responder. Is that right?
No, that's not right, because I, I went in with another group, and we put in a bid.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah.
Okay.
There was another, I was part of it.
I have a question. What is the, what is the legal standing of the CBDA?
It's a nonprofit.
They're a nonprofit.
Are they a incorporated nonprofit, or what are they?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding.
So if I went to IRS, I could find them.
We'll get that information for you.
I, I think Shannon's right, though. I think if we're going to change the contract up, it needs to be put out to bid.
It was an option we considered, and a lot, it is not uncommon for a central business district to have an association of members and property owners that are vested with managing a portion of the taxes to do programming, marketing, and activities for the area. It's a limited amount that, you know, contributing factor could be that there's not a lot of administrative support that's available in that limited amount, but it is, it is, our recommendation was to go with CBDA, but we could do it competitively as well.
Yes, John?
I would favor competition as well, but I'll wait to get the answers to my other questions. I'm going to log down today, because I know times, but I do want those people to vote on the bid.
All right, anybody else? Ben?
I'm in favor of the CBDA running it.
Their membership, their membership is comprised of those that are operating and working within the district. They, they have taken responsibility for their entertainment. They call upon their members to contribute. The dollars that you saw up here do, do not pay for everything that they provide. They have a tremendous amount that comes forth from their individual owners, members through their businesses and their contributions. They, they have grown in their oversight and concern with regards to the atmosphere they want to create in, in our Town Center. They, they live there, work there. There is a distinct advantage, buy-in by having this organization oversee, that which their businesses' tax dollars are, through the SSD, is going to be allocated towards entertainment in the central business district.
What prohibits them from just having input in how we select a bid?
They could, and that's what we would potentially incorporate and go back to them and ask them, okay, if the council wants to put this out for competitive bid, then we would do that. And their administration over that would have to work out to where they're satisfied, and they're getting the product that they want to continue to entice folks to come to Town Center and spend their money.
Well, they have the most interest, though, in making this work.
They are the stakeholders.
Right. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not trying to discourage that. I'm like Ben, I think they're probably the best group to do it. I just want to make sure if we're going to allocate $150,000 of money to, to do this with somebody, that we have a legal entity that we're dealing with. That's-
Agreed. Yes, sir.
And I don't, I don't discount anything that Jeanie and the CBDA and the group does. I think they do great work, and I go to Last Night on the Town and First Night on the Town every year. You know, it's fun. However, I just, you know, competition often brings new ideas and new energy and, and things to the table that we may not get if, you know, having a seat at the table with the new group or the new entity. I'm just, wanted to make sure we had that discussion, that is this the best route to go, or should we open it up for competition to see what other options that we get? Certainly, we'll go with, with the team here as to what they want to do, but I just wanted to throw that out there for people to thought.
Okay. Let me get Ms. Henley, and then you, John.
I just want to clarify, that we're still talking, this is SSD money.
Correct.
That's the 45 cents of the-
Yes, ma'am.
-real estate taxes paid for by the people who own the properties.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Their money.
Well, not really. Isn't it deposited with the city? It doesn't decide if you're fiduciary in the legal owner of the money once it's deposited?
I mean, I would think since they have, they are-
I think that's true.
They should have an awful lot of say in-
But it came from their funds.
If it's their fund.
It originated with them.
And to write, to write to Ms. Henley, you know, we have an SSD down at Sandbridge, and you know how very respectful we are of the oversight management, and we have taken our cue from them-
From the property owners.
Very, very, down to how much we spend, and, you know, it took me a couple of years just to get the beach maintenance through, and you guys are watching me pretty close this first summer that we do this. So, you know, just understand, this dynamic of an SSD is really different.
Yeah, it's different.
I think there's a point that Dave made that we shouldn't gloss over, and that is that for the entire package of entertainment that's being offered there, this is a portion of it. And so the CBDA is actually going out and raising additional funds. I bring that up because it's, it's more of a challenge for them to raise additional funds if they have to go through a specific contractor to administer those funds. So in other words, if, if we give the 150 directly to CBDA, and they are going to, not only, my suspicion is it more than match that, they would be able to say, okay, we're going to put on this event, we're going to administer this one because we can handle it. Or if there was another event, then they would go out, because it's their money, too, that they're raising, would go out and competitively bid for another event. And they could actually have different contractors for different events throughout the year. But if we start putting them in different buckets, really the concept here is to combine them so that you have much more impact than if you had just with the 150.
And they're willing to take on a lot of extra responsibility.
There's a lot of responsibility.
All right, anybody else? Any other?
We'll get those responses, Mr. Moss, Ms. Abbott.
Are you finished, Ron?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I'd like to introduce City's Controller, Don Barnett, who by the way, is going to be retiring the end of next month.
Oh, congratulations to her.
Ms. Miriam Woodson, who is Principal Accountant, and Mr. Kevin Kielbasa, who's here somewhere, is Senior Accountant. Okay, and they brought this stuff together for us today. You received in your package the full details. I just want to point out, we've got the major funds. There's also a detail of the appropriation and expenditures of every capital project and every outstanding grant. So if you get curious about where a project is, at least you've got some money here. It may not tell you exactly what's going on in the project, but you'll see where the money's going. And with that, I'm going to try this. And as I've pointed out most months, this is the, the one table that kind of summarizes everything for the general fund. $1,130 million revenue budget, $664.9 million collected. Only 58.8% has come in through the end of April. But we're spending money right, right along. A billion, 197 million budget, 981 spent, 82% spent. So it's what I tell you almost every month, we still have a ways to go. This is how much is yet to be realized. But because a lot of our revenues come in in the last month of the year, working capital's very important for the city. I'm going to go into, what I typically go into each, each month, and that's the status of some of the major revenues. Where are we? Real estate revenue, we have a budget of 521.9 million just for the general fund. We've collected 281 million. We're right where we need to be. See that trend line? We are tracking exactly where we need to be. Personal property tax, I got an update through, through this morning, we had actually collected 40 million on the taxes that are due in June. But a few minutes ago, I got, it's 42 million as of 11 o'clock today. So this revenue item is coming in very well. The budget should be exceeded, just as real estate should be exceeded. This is the most difficult to project. It's an annual tax we get at the end of the year. That, that's what brings it all together. The 1% local general sales tax, you see that we've actually collected 47.5 million through the- actually collected 47.5 million through the end of April, up 1.4% from the prior year. But compared to budget, this is likely not to be made to budget. We'll be a little bit under. Business license, we have actually achieved the 46.8 million budget as of now. We're actually a little bit over. So, this will be over budget. That's a good news for our local economy. People are, are in business. Hotel room tax, good news is we're at 30.1 million against a 34.9 million budget. We will exceed budget slightly. I just have this in here for your reference, how we split it up. This is the, the 2% general, well, this is the total, and the 2% general fund is also doing the same. Total restaurant meal taxes, 68.8 million budget. We've collected more than last year's same thing, probably gonna be a hair under budget. This is just a chart to remind you of how the hotel tax and meal tax are split. It's confusing. I always refer back to this chart, you know, if it's something you need to keep in your hip pocket. Mr. Earn knows it by heart, but I don't necessarily. I'm not gonna go over this chart. Real estate, personal property, business license, hotel tax will be over budget. Restaurant meal tax, general sales tax will be slightly under. Overall, we think will be a little over. Put you now to expenditures. As we say, we spend money pretty evenly throughout the year. We've spent 981 million. We still have 216 million unspent as of April. We fully expect we will be underspent, as we always are. And again, my favorite chart, the green is what's happened actual. We have spent almost 85% of our, or 82% of our budget and collected nearly 58% of our revenues. Everything's gotta come in together before we close the books. And that's always, you know, the unknown. When you're making a budget, how far in advance do you know all this? This is our little, little indicator that we think we, our fund bounce will end up within our policy, but a little bit less than last year. Last year, we were a little over 10%. We think we'll be a little under this year. And we, we've got a couple different projections, and we're just kind of giving you that range. So, we'll be back next month, and, you know, the whole process starts again with the audit coming to you by the end of the year. So.
Any question? John?
I just want to remind the public that the Commissioner of the Revenue is holding, that's Phil Kellum, is holding, get your car reassessed out at the Princeton Athletic Compound. I encourage every citizen to find time to go out there and look at it. I took all my cars out there, and it was certainly worthwhile. Every dollar counts. Don't pay us any more than you have to.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Next is...
Thanks, Patty.
Thanks.
God, Miriam, see ya.
Ending, Patty and I, and C Carolyn is here.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll give you a quick glimpse of things to come for your planning items scheduled for June 5th. And then Jimmy McNamara, he drew the short straw today. He'll talk about the 11 planning items that we have scheduled for you on June 19th. So, the four planning items scheduled on the 5th, three of those are recommended for approval by both the Planning Commission and by the staff. And item number one has a lot of history behind it, pun included, intended, I should say. In 1975, the city acquired 35 acres as part of a plan to protect the historic Francis Land House. And the idea was to keep ownership of approximately four acres for the Francis Land House and then sell off the remaining 31 acres for commercial, retail, and office uses. As part of the sale in 1979, specifically of this three-quarter of an acre site to the Tidewater Automobile Association of Virginia, the city placed a deed restriction that does limit the activity on this site to commercial, retail, and office activities. But it went further to also prohibit automobile repair establishments, auto sales and rentals, boat sales, and storage, commercial parking lots, and commercial kennels. So, this request on June 5th will be, actually be twofold. It'll be a request to revise those deed restrictions, and it will also be a request for a modification to the existing conditional use permit, to the use permit for the auto dealership that's adjacent to the east. So, the applicant proposes to incorporate this three and, three-quarter of an acre site that's shown in red on the screen into the dealership in order to provide some additional auto display area. They do plan to remove the existing building that's shown on the right of the screen, and as the property is located in the Francis Land House Historic and Cultural District, they did pursue and receive a certificate of appropriateness from the Historical Review Board for their concept earlier this year. So, staff is not aware of any opposition on this request. Item number two is one that you are likely familiar with. It was deferred by the City Council back in November of 2017, following the public hearing. It's a request in the Rose Hall District along Highland Road, and it's for a conditional use permit for both a car wash as well as for a gas station. So, based on public comment that was made during the Planning Commission public hearing, the Planning Commission added a condition that limits the hours of operation to 7:00 AM to, to 9:00 PM. And also, following the public hearing with the Planning Commission, the applicant has added several conditions, one that will require the submission of a lighting plan during the final site plan review, and also the installation of security cameras. Also, the applicant has expanded the use of prohibited uses for the site, and some of the more intense prohibited uses include restaurants with the drive-through, convenience stores, motor vehicle sales, bulk storage yards, and alcohol sales and service. The site layout has also been modified since this, the Planning Commission hearing, and this does address some of the concerns that were raised by the community. They have installed, or are proposing to install, a 45-foot-wide no-build zone adjacent to the residential neighborhood. An electric vehicle charging station will be added to the site. A right-in, right-out along Highland Road is proposed, and then some additional parking was requested, and that will be used by the future out parcel. I believe that opposition still remains for this request, so this is one that you will hear on June 4th. The next item is a change to a non-conforming use, which you were briefed on in April. However, you deferred it at the request of the applicant in May. This is a request for an, or a redevelopment of a non-conforming use. They do have 10 legal non-conforming residential units on the site. Under the existing A24 apartment district, they have the ability to redevelop the site with up to seven units. This request is to redevelop the site with a total of nine residential units within two buildings. A slightly revised plan has been submitted to staff since the Planning Commission hearing, and this reflects a slight shift of the building closer to the right-of-way to be more in conformance with the voluntary seepine station design guidelines. And it also depicts the removal of a wraparound porch that was originally proposed on the eastern side of the building, so that will provide additional privacy to those existing residents to the east. There was opposition present at the Planning Commission meeting, and they did note concerns regarding the proposed architectural style of the building, the difficulties with parking in the vicinity of the site, and also issues with stormwater management. Despite the opposition, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously to recommend to you approval of this request.
Will we get a transcript of the opposition?
Yes. You certainly will.
Carolyn, the parking that's gonna be provided onsite, does that meet all current regulations?
They are shy one parking space. However, due to some improvements that they are going to be required to make in the right-of-way, they will actually gain five parking spaces, five parking spaces on the perimeter of the site. So, they won't meet them technically onsite, but there will be addition, more parking when this is all said and done than there is now today.
That parking would be public parking, not parking owned just by them?
It is on, the, the on-street parking is absolutely public parking, yes, indeed.
So, it's not their parking?
Correct. And then the fourth item, which will be your short-term rentals, this has been advertised. So, we are asking if you would like to go ahead perhaps with a public hearing, based on the results of the survey that Kay says she can produce a document for folks to comment on, or you could simply defer it and, and wait a little bit longer. So, it's really up to you, and, and I'm not sure that you have to decide right at this moment, but it is advertised for your June 5th.
Based on our conversation this evening, I think we need to defer.
Defer.
Okay.
If the survey was the Ross, not the public?
All right. And now, Jimmy is up for June 19th. Thank you.
Been a long day, and there's nothing like having 11 items between you and getting out the door. So, I'm gonna roll through quickly. We have a busy day on June 19th. We have 11 planning items that are scheduled. Both Planning Commission and staff have recommended approval of each of these items. Item number one is a request for a conditional use permit for an in-home daycare in the Aragona Village neighborhood for up to 12 children. There's ample area for the children to play in the backyards and as well to play outside, as well as for her clients to park, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Not only about this one, but daycare in general. Now, when we do a daycare center, is that go with the property, or is it just with that owner?
Land, that is a conditional use permit that goes with the property, so it goes with the land.
So, another person could come in and...
Yes, ma'am.
But they would have to be licensed at the state and get that right.
They would have to fill all the requirements that were set forth with the Department of Social Services.
I've received a complaint from the North Beach Civic League about someone that is advertising senior care, I guess, senior daycare on, on the Nextdoor app. And, and I'm curious, what, what is the, the rule on that? Does that require a CUP as well, or is it, is it function of the number of folks that, that are staying there? How does that work?
So, I believe we can point back to Kay here, but I believe we did an amendment about two years ago that included family daycare home, which is what we're advertised for, which doesn't necessarily specify an age. So, it incorporates adult daycare as well. I'm not sure about the Department of Social Services and their requirements.
But what's, what would trigger it to come here?
For children.
More than four unrelated adults? Okay. Or four unrelated people, not adults?
In, in the, in the adult would be four unrelated?
I think we're gonna have to research...
Yeah, we'll have to get back to you on that one.
I'll send it, I'll send it to Barry.
All right. Next is a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage. This is an after-the-fact request for the automobile garage that is operating along Euclid Road in the Bayside District. Upon renewal of their business license, it was discovered the CUP was never obtained. So, they're here, and they occupy a small unit within the building, only about 1,000 square feet for where they're currently operating. And they operate a custom wheel shop where all the work is done inside the building. There were four speakers in opposition to this request, but most of the opposition was related to the byright uses that also operate within this building. And those uses are more close to the property, which is on... Most of the opposition came from over here, and as you can see, the unit that we're talking about is on the far side. The zoning inspection and housing inspection staff are working with the property owner and operators and other units to address dumpster noise, outdoor storage of materials, as noted by the neighbors at the Planning Commission public hearing. Staff and Planning Commission do recommend approval of this request. Next is a request for special exception for alternative compliance to redevelop these two lots that are located at the oceanfront with three single-family dwellings. Up to four units are permitted by right. However, the placement of one of those units literally on the property line necessitates this request for alternative compliance. Two units are oriented along 20th Street, and one unit is oriented along the alley on 20 and a half street. Two onsite parking spaces will be provided for each of the units, and all vehicular access will be from the alley. The elevations depict buildings with deep front porches, balconies, cement fiber, and shake. Staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Item number four is a request for a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage, specifically a Vavoline, to operate on the out parcel at the Harris Tier Shopping Center located at the intersection of Princess Anne and Sandbridge Road. The plan depicts two-bay, 1,600-square-foot building, as required by the proffers associated with the rezoning. The exterior does take cues from the existing shopping center. A preliminary drainage study has been submitted and approved by the Development Services Center, and the applicant has appeared before the ITA/TA Citizens Advisory Committee, and staff is not aware of any opposition to this request. Next is a request for a tattoo parlor within the Le Promenade Shopping Center. Specifically, the applicant is requesting to do microblading, and as we all know, this is permanent makeup. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building, and no sign changes either, and staff is not aware of any opposition. Next is a request of the City of Virginia Beach to fill a former borrow pit that's located along Oceana Boulevard across from NAS Oceana. Only hazardous materials from city dredge operations will be placed into the pit.
Non-hazardous.
Non-hazardous. Thank you. Non-hazardous materials. I say, it's been a long day. Non-hazardous materials from city dredge operations will be placed into the pit. There were several speakers in opposition who, to the request, who noted concerns with potential contamination of their wells and noise from trucks that would be placing the materials in. Planning Commission did vote 6 to 3 to recommend approval. Several Planning Commissioners recommended a condition for city to monitor water quality within the private wells. However, the majority of Planning Commission felt that this condition was overburdened some, and thus, you get the, the 6 to 3 vote. So, the motion was passed with that.
Are these wells used for drinking water?
Is our understanding, yes.
Get a lot more details on that, please, before that vote comes up, and how we plan to do all that monitoring and what, and what our liability is for the city attorney's office.
The borrow pit, the surface water is recharged by the surface reservoir, and the drinking wells are into the Dorkton Aquifer. There's confining layer in between.
Yeah, well, I've heard a lot of stories with, you know, water contamination. I'd just like more assurance than blipper.
Ms. Henley?
Well, I sort of echo that. I remember some in the past that we had had some difficulties with filling borrow pits with dredge material. Can't, I think it depends a lot on where that dredge material comes from.
Yes, Jim.
This is on Oceana Boulevard?
Yes, sir.
So, there's city water and city sewer on Oceana Boulevard, right?
It's, it's not currently available to the two homes that are, that are on the well. It's not directly available.
They're somewhere back.
Okay.
Item seven is a request for conditional rezoning for 33 acres on the northeast corner of North Hampton Boulevard and Premium Outlets Boulevard. A portion of the former Lake Wright Golf Course is owned by the City of Virginia Beach, but is located in the City of Virgi, excuse, is owned by the City of Norfolk, but is located in the City of Virginia Beach. So, up to 250,000 square feet of commercial uses are proposed for the site. Vehicular ingress egress points are located along North Hampton Boulevard, Premium Outlets Boulevard, and a future connection to the future Tolliver Road that's being constructed. The plan depicts sidewalk and trail connections throughout the site and into the community, and staff is not aware of any opposition, and Planning Commission places on the consent agenda. Item number eight is a rezoning along Shore Drive, and as well as a conditional use permit for multiple family dwellings. Six townhouse-style dwellings are proposed with a single, single vehicular access point along Pendleton Avenue. Deviations are requested, setbacks, lot area, and fence height, which both staff and Planning Commission support. There's no, no, excuse me, a letter was received in opposition that noted concerns with traffic. Item nine is a conditional use permit request for an automobile repair establishment in the Lynn Haven District at Thalia Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant proposes to fully redevelop the two properties with a discount tire operation. Two of the four existing ingress egress points will be removed, improving safety and reducing potential conflicts. The proposed plant material that's depicted on the plan exceeds the minimum standards. And the building's exterior is a bit of an upgrade for discount tires that have been built into Virginia Beach to this point. The applicant has met with the neighborhood to work on the details of the proposal, and based on that, we are not aware of any opposition.
Is that an ingress egress there on Virginia Beach Boulevard?
Yes, it is.
I'd like to know later why, since that's right after the light, why there's no right-turn lane that goes into that property. I'd like to understand the engineering analysis of that.
Jim?
There's, there's actually two points of access on the Boulevard now, side by side, and they're closing up the one. And, and I would say also that there was a good bit of neighborhood opposition to this, and the applicant completely redesigned the building, and it, it went from being a flat road... the applicant completely redesigned the building, and it went from being a flat roof, kind of traditional, to this. And I would say it's successful in terms of the way that they work with it. But yeah, John, there's two now there. The one's blocked right now, one of the access is blocked by cars.
It has planners on it, but I know when you come down that road and people make that right turn in there right after the light, then you get a very inefficient flow point from the light because of its proximity. And since it's a wholly developed, I'm just trying to understand why, you know, that was... maybe there's a reason, I'd just like to understand what it is.
Are they keeping the cut through in the back there?
They are, so this is the rear parcel, so we're talking about two parcels that currently exist, and this is an access onto that rear parcel. So the one that currently is right here is, they're closing that entrance.
So are they taking the office building in the back as well?
Yes, that is.
Okay, so the cut through to the restaurant in the back is staying open?
Yes, they're maintaining the existing cross-access back there. That is correct. Item number 10 is the long-awaited modification of proffers associated with the Asheville Park neighborhood for Section C, D, and E. As you may recall, this specific request was deferred by City Council in 2015, and as you know, the city and developer are entering into a cost participation agreement for drainage improvements. So based on this, the open space will expand slightly, which will accommodate larger stormwater management ponds. No additional units above the 499 that are currently approved are proposed, and staff is not aware of any specific opposition at this point.
Just so I'm clear, this is the application that went to the Planning Commission, which will move 16 units from D and E to Village C and reconstitute the size of the lots in Village C.
This is the same request that appeared back in 2015.
Okay.
And since we're expanding, under that participation agreement, which we haven't seen the final pieces, we were expanding the size of one of the retention ponds, so that means they're able to put, but they're keeping their density, so it means they're having more density, an increase in density, because we're having a bigger stormwater retention pond that we're going to own.
Yeah, so I believe...
Yes, right, but it's not the HOA, it's this taxpayer, all the rate base it pays. I just want to make sure it's one and the same. It'll be interesting to hear that.
Sure. So yeah, so we're on to... All right, so finally, gen. item number 11 is for Zider's American Dream Theater, which has submitted a request for the installation of three roadside guide signs within the central business core district at the locations that are depicted on the screen. At City Council's discretion, roadside guide signs may be installed within the right-of-way. The request comes directly to Council as Planning Commission action is not required. The signs will provide directional information to the cultural venue within Town Center, and there is no known opposition to this request. And that is that.
That it?
That is it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Savitt?
Aye.
Ms. Savitt?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Earn?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Dunn?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
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 Aye.
Ms. Smith? Aye.
Ms. Smith? Aye.
Ms. Smith? Aye.
Ms. Smith? Aye.
Ms. Smith? Aye.
Ms. Smith?[1782.14]